All right, folks on the screen, we good to go? Dr. Williams, are you there? Yes, you're there.
I am.
All right, welcome, everybody. Our first work session is student achievement tonight, and we have two significant items on the agenda. The first is literacy assessment data. And we, this year, I think for the first time, at least since I've been involved, we did a review of September literacy data, middle-of-the-year literacy data, and now we're doing end-of-the-year literacy data to see the progress for our students in the early grades in regards to literacy. And then the second item on our agenda is a WAZED update by Mrs. Perret Walker. With that said, I will turn it over to Dr. Williams to introduce Mrs. Anne Botticelli, our chief academic officer.
Thank you so much, Vice President, Chairman Scott. You know, there's a tribe in Africa that's called the Masai tribe, and their traditional greeting to one another is Kasirian Engari. And that means, "How are the children?" So they don't ask, you know, like we ask all the time, "How are you?" And you hear, "Fine." They want to know about how the children are because that really is asking about the next generation. And I know that this board is very, very interested. We've been talking a lot about student outcomes and academic achievement of our students. And so we're going to hear from our chief academic officer, Anne Botticelli, some very detailed information about how our children, our little learners, are doing in reading, what the demonstration has been for the beginning of the year, where they started. She's even going to go back a little bit and talk a little bit about, you know, a couple of years ago when our children were at home learning due to the COVID crisis. And then we went to the hybrid model and, you know, where they are now because our strategic plan is very explicit in talking about where we want to see our children by 2025. And I think that the data that you see will show that we're on the path to getting to where we want to be in 2025. After she is, after she's done, we'll hear from Mrs. Perret Walker, who is our program officer, and she oversees our WAZED, our string program, which is science, technology, engineering, reading, mathematics. And you're going to hear where we are there because it's a big initiative. But, you know, it's another way that's engaging our children's learning. So I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Botticelli to get started with her presentation on our BPS Student Success Plan, specifically addressing literacy. Ms. Botticelli?
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I just want to make sure I'm going to... Is that PowerPoint going to show here?
No, it will be on your screen.
Okay. So while Admire is pulling it up, I just want to briefly let you know I am going to be talking about the progress in our Student Success Plan. So specifically focused today on literacy. So Admire, next slide, please. As always, we are moving on to the next level. It's really important to us that we are inclusive, equitable, meeting students' rights, their civil rights, especially in this case, to learn to read. So I'm going to focus today on our earliest learners, our rigorous early elementary education. Next slide, please. As always, we are striving to meet the superintendent's goals. And today, we'll talk about two of them in detail. Eliminating achievement and opportunity gaps, number one, and providing access to educational excellence, accelerated learning, number two. Next slide, please. So the purpose of our Student Success Plan is to really help ensure a welcoming and affirming environment, hold high expectations for our students, provide rigorous instruction and inclusive curriculum assessments, and to provide ongoing professional learning opportunities to get our staff ready to support those students. So I'm going to focus in today on early literacy because we know that if we want our students to be successful in the long term, not only do we need to make them feel welcome, feel that they belong, we have to hold those high expectations, and we have to provide that rigor. And so today, I want to talk a little bit about what we've done this year and some of the results we've seen. Next slide, please. So just some context for today's discussion. So across the chart, you can see the past few years. In 2019-20, we sent the students home in March. It was an exceptional time. COVID first had struck in America, and we had to sort of reinvent education and the way it was delivered. So at that time, our current fourth graders were in grade one. Our current third graders were in kindergarten. And our current second graders were in pre-kindergarten, which means that our current first and kindergartners were not even in the school setting yet. They had a very unique circumstance. They may or may not have been identified early on for specific needs that we might have normally addressed with younger students. They may have had some impact on their speech. So, for example, speech delays. There's a lot of things that could have been happening with our youngest learners because they weren't in our traditional pipeline at that time. I also definitely want to draw our attention to the older learners, grade four and three, because they had an interruption in their foundational skills experience. Because K and one is where we deliver and ensure that students have a grasp of those foundational skills that they're going to continue to develop over the course of time. But those particular students had an interruption in those formative years. 2021, you can see that we were in sort of a remote hybrid in-person mix. So again, our current fourth graders at that time were in second. Our third graders were in first. Our second graders were in K. And our current first graders were in pre-K at that time. So again, it was a unique year. It was not the typical experience that other students would have had when they were in those grade levels. In 21-22, we went back to in-person. But if you remember, that was also a time when there was still a lot of restrictions in how we operated in the classroom. We were social distancing. We were wearing masks for a large part of that time. There were specific strains of the virus that were still being seen in the area. So there were a number of student absences and potential teacher absences based on that. So at that time, our current fourth graders were in third. Our current third graders were in second. Our current second graders were in first. Our current first graders were in kindergarten. And our current kindergartners were in pre-K. So again, a unique experience compared to what other students have gone through at those grade levels. And then finally, this year. So we'll take a look at the data right now for our current fourth, third, second, first, and kindergartners. Next slide, please, Admire. So I'm going to focus first on K to two. So we'll take a look at their DIBELS scores, the whole group, and then some disaggregated data. And then we will move on to some of the things that we're doing. So you can see for this first report, this is the all-students group. So all of our kindergartners, first graders, and second graders. You're looking at the composite DIBELS score. So if you remember, there are a number of brief assessments that are compiled together to create the composite score in DIBELS. So again, DIBELS is our universal screening measure. It is given to all students at these grade levels. And then we progress monitor in between. So we just make sure that our students are moving forward at the expected rate. So you can see, we did make some progress in our early grades, K one and two. The first line you see, BOY, is the beginning of the year. So for example, in kindergarten, we started the year at 58% of our students entering the system below grade level. You can see, by the end of the year, we had cut that down to 40% of our students performing below grade level, well below grade level, I should say. So that has a significant impact of some of the work that's been happening in our classrooms. We're not satisfied. That's not the end. But we know that the things that we've started to do over the past couple of years are definitely seeing results. You can see a similar trajectory in grade one and grade two in the all-student group. So just as a quick reminder, the blue is above grade level. The green represents on-grade level. The yellow is moderately below grade level, and the red is more significantly below grade level, or well below. To the right, you see the number of students that were tested at each point in time. And obviously, there's slight fluctuations depending on students being present at the time of testing. Admire, next slide, please. So if you broke it out by our economically disadvantaged students, it is a smaller number of students, but you can see a similar trajectory for the way students progressed across time at the K one and two. Admire, next slide, please. Now, this slide and the next slide are two I want to draw our attention to. So our English as a New Language, our L population, they struggled a bit more in this, on this particular assessment. This, again, is measuring basically phonics skills and fluency. So we know that many of these students come in, obviously, not necessarily speaking English as a first language. So they need supports to become proficient in English. On top of that, we're asking these same students to also learn to decode in our own language, in English. Right? So not only are they learning English as a language itself, but they're also learning to read in English. Some of them may or may not be literate in their own home language. So there's a lot of variables impacting the student's scores here. But this is an area, I do want to draw your attention because it's a place we know we need to put focus.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, is the entire... Okay, there it is. Okay, I'm sorry. Because it was like, half of it was cut off. Okay, thank you.
No problem. So Students with Disabilities is also a group that we want to ensure we are targeting. So one of the things we've done, and I'll talk more about this, but we are training all of our special education teachers, K through eight, to use Orton Gillingham. That is specifically targeted at the needs of a number of our special education students. It's a program that was designed with the dyslexic student in mind. So it is very structured. It is explicit, systematic, and sequential. And we know that when we have our teachers trained and they're able to deliver this instruction with fidelity, we're going to see gains, especially in this particular population. So just as a reminder, we started this training, but not everyone has yet been trained. And many who were trained were trained in the middle of the year because it's a five-day process, and it's very time-consuming, and it's not easy to get everyone in at the same time. So some people may have been trained in April and potentially started it after that. But you won't see a full year of implementation at this point. That's what we're hoping for next year, which is why we're continuing to train over the summer. So we're offering Orton Gillingham, four cohorts, so 48 per cohort over this summer to try to catch up any teachers that are still untrained but that we want to over the students in September. Next slide, please, Admire. This is our Asian population. And again, you're going to see a similar trajectory. So the students started well below in the beginning of the year, and that number was cut down by the end of the year because we are very specifically targeting phonics skills with our students. Again, this goes back to the science of reading. We know how important it is to be explicit and systematic and sequential with our instruction. So we continue to improve the way that we deliver phonics to our students. Next slide, please. This is our Black and African-American population. And again, you're going to see a similar trajectory in K and one, slightly less in second. So if you remember, those second graders, let's see, they were in... Second graders would have been in pre-K the year we first went out in 1920. So we have some makeup work to do with our second-grade cohort. So I'm going to continue to draw your attention to second, third, and fourth graders because we know those were the students that were strongly impacted in terms of their foundational development and skills during the pandemic. Next slide, please. These are Hispanic students. So there are a mix of students who might just be in a traditional English as a New Language program, or they may be students who are receiving both ENL and bilingual education. So just remembering that there is an impact in bilingual education because they're either beginning 90% in Spanish or splitting 50-50 Spanish and English. Their DIBELS scores often reflect that. So as time progresses, the student's skills will solidify in English. But for the early grades, sometimes they're spending more time working on their Spanish instruction. So it will vary depending on a particular student. And you see that here in our DIBELS data. Next slide, please. This is our white subgroup. And this trajectory, again, is very similar to the all-students group. You can see that we continue to cut down the number of students who are in that tier-three level. Next slide, please, Admire. So I just took a snapshot for you. This is from a kindergarten classroom. This particular teacher was trained in the fall in Orton Gillingham and began to slowly implement Orton Gillingham methodology throughout the course of the year. She phased in different pieces of the program, and by the end of the year, was using it pretty much as designed. But I just want to draw your attention. She started with 10 students well below benchmark at the beginning of the year. And as she began to implement Orton Gillingham, you can see the difference over time. By the end of the year, the EOI, she had zero students well below benchmark.
That's amazing.
Yeah, we don't... In the past, we have not necessarily seen growth like this. Not every classroom is at this place, obviously, because teachers were trained at different points in time. She was trained earlier than many other kindergarten teachers. But I just wanted to highlight this because this is what we are hoping to see across the board in kindergarten. We should have the majority of our teachers trained for the start of school in September. There will always be fluctuations because sometimes teachers, you know, switch grade levels, or we have new hires coming onboard. We recognize that. But for the bulk of our kindergarten teachers, they will have been through the Orton Gillingham sequence. And we anticipate that they will start the school year using that as their key phonics piece. Next slide, please. Oh, and I also just want to point out, it benefited all the students, not just students who are well below. Admire, can you go back for a second? Admire, can you go back a second? You're going to notice that multiple students moved into benchmark and then even into above. So I know there's always concern that Orton Gillingham is extremely explicit, and perhaps not every student will thrive in this program. But I really do believe that that explicit sequential instruction is going to benefit every student, including a student who might have started out at benchmark or close to it. They will continue to progress as well. Next slide, please. So I just want to talk to you a little bit about what K2 core instruction for reading will look like next year. At this point in time, based on the progress we've made and the fact that many programs are not going to meet our needs, we plan to continue with the existing resources that we have with some upgrades and tweaks. So I just want to talk to you a little bit about K2 instruction for reading next year. So we're going to maintain the use of Haggerty as our phonemic awareness program. We're going to keep Orton Gillingham as the baseline phonics program in kindergarten. I said keep, but really, many classrooms are starting that. By first and second, we will be introducing UFLI foundations. It's from the University of Florida's Literacy Initiative. It may sound familiar because back in the days of Reading First, this organization was at the forefront. So we're going to be adopting this piece for phonics at first and second. Until teachers are trained, they can continue to use the existing phonics lessons that we have in place. But we recognize that the foundations program is going to be a mirror effect for Orton Gillingham. So it's really going to use this very similar strategies. It's equally explicit and sequential and systematic. So as our core foundation for first and second, we are very comfortable that this will meet our needs. We will continue to provide Orton Gillingham as an intervention at first and second. And we've actually opened up training to our first-grade teachers. So at some point in time, we may be able to also use it as a base at first. But for now, it will continue to be our intervention for tier-three. Then to make sure that we have strong fluency practice, we have a number of programs with decodable materials. So kids will be practicing their phonics skills after they're taught by their teacher. So that will help develop their fluency and reinforce phonics. We know how important oral vocabulary is. And I say oral because at this age, many of the students can't read multi-syllabic words yet, but they can understand them. So they may not be able to read the word chrysalis, but I can teach a student what that word means, and they can speak that word and recognize it when other people are using it. And then when they do learn to decode chrysalis in third or fourth, they're going to automatically be able to attach meaning to that word. So we're trying to be very structured with our approach to vocabulary. We're going to make sure we're targeting academic advanced words with the youngest learners so that they can use those words in their speech and recognize it in our speech. And that when they become more proficient decoders, they'll be able to read that word themselves and apply to meaning. So to do that, we're going to focus on a lot of vocabulary tasks through our Read Alouds. The CLRI department provided us with a fantastic set of resources last year called Rising Voices. And we'll continue to use those in our classrooms for Read Alouds. We'll also access, excuse me, access things like CKLA, which is a knowledge-building Read Aloud program. So we have a number of opportunities there to not only build comprehension, but also build vocabulary with our younger students. And then across the content areas, we'll continue to focus on vocabulary. So in our social studies curriculum and our science curriculum, we'll be continuing to add to the students' lexicon. In terms of comprehension, we will also use Read Alouds, and we'll use text-dependent questions tied to those Read Alouds. So a number of those were already rolled out last year. So it's really just continuing a practice that was begun by the reading department last year. But the text-dependent questions help students who later will be taking state assessments and need to find evidence in the text. We're training them early on. The questions will tie back to the text, and they have to share their answers using evidence from the particular Read Alouds that they've been listening to. By second, they'll be more proficient with text. And we also believe we can pull some of the Journeys anthology back in. And then in terms of writing and grammar, Orton Gillingham actually does have a writing and grammar, excuse me, a writing component, especially for forming letters. But we'll continue to step up to writing at these grade levels because we know how successful it's been in the past. So nothing, other than adding UFLI, nothing is dramatically different than what we have done in the past. But we're having a more intense focus on using the decodables. We will not be using leveled readers at these grades. So we're working with the teachers to make sure that in small groups, they're addressing the skills appropriately. Next slide, please. So I just want to talk briefly about UFLI. So the simple view of reading is decoding. Times linguistic comprehension equals reading comprehension. So you have to have a solid understanding of decoding as well as linguistics in order to be a fluent, comprehending reader. UFLI is going to focus for us on the decoding piece. So it's going to replace our letter-based phonics lessons. Teachers will continue to use those until they've received the training in UFLI. But we believe that this particular program is going to meet our needs for those first and second graders. Next slide, please. Oh, and I should say, it is also explicit, systematic, and sequential, research-based, and evidence-based. They've been piloting it, and their results are very promising in terms of phonics, phonemic awareness, fluency. Our intervention program will remain the same. So in tier-one, students will continue to have enrichment opportunities. They'll use Step Up to Writing. Teachers can accelerate them with particular texts that they select. And we'll also be phasing in some WAZED opportunities across the board during RTI. In tier-two, they'll continue to use Haggerty. We still have Lexia, and it will be Max. And there are lessons, very explicit lessons that come with Lexia, as well as DIBELS. And then for tier-three, we'll continue to use Orton Gillingham. We are phasing out our direct instruction programs. Next slide, please. So now, I'll briefly talk a little bit about our three-to-five program for reading. So we'll start with some of our results. So you can see, we did not have the same trajectory here that we had K one, two. Remember, these were the students that had the most interrupted educational experience in kindergarten and first, when they would have been learning in kindergarten and first, when they would have been learning many of those very foundational phonics skills. So we know that we need to target these grade levels. Again, we are training all of our special education teachers, all of our E and L teachers at these grade levels. We are training, we train, have trained actually our reading specialists, our literacy coaches, our kindergarten teachers, and as many first grade teachers as we can get in so that resources can be concentrated at K and one with classroom teachers, and the specialists can move up and target our students, third, fourth, and above. Next slide, please. So you're going to see a trend here. Most of our data follows a similar trajectory to our all-student group. So this is our economically disadvantaged population at these grade levels. Next slide, please. Our English as a New Language population are our Ls. Again, we are training the E and L teachers, so they will also be fluent in Orton Gillingham as well as morphology. So by the time students hitting third grade, they're accessing multi-syllabic words in text. Sentences are longer, words are more complex. The structural analysis of words becomes very important. So we're training all of our third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade teachers in the INSE Morphology Program, which is a companion to Orton Gillingham. So it uses a similar methodology, but it's going to attack more sophisticated words. So students will be practicing base words, root words, and prefixes and suffixes in Greek and Latin. So those multi-syllabic words they begin to encounter in third grade, we have a strategy to help them. And that will especially support our English as a New Language program because many of our Ls, they are going to need that additional support because they wouldn't be as familiar with some of that vocabulary. So our E and L teachers will be an excellent support here. Next slide, please. And again, we are training all of our special education teachers. The expectation will be that they use Orton Gillingham with their students in Tier Three to support the phonics skills that some of our students are struggling. Next slide, please. This is our Asian population. Again, you know, we're not seeing the exact pattern of decrease in our well below student reading situation, but that is obviously something that we keep trying to target. And I have some other suggestions for how we can do that work. Next slide, please. So similarly, our Black and African-American student population saw a slight regression in grade four, stayed relatively the same in grade three. We'll be continuing to target their needs. Next slide, please. Hispanic population, again, a very similar trajectory with the, as the other students. Next slide, please. Our white population, again, we continue to see that the, the well below population grew a little bit by the end of the year in fourth, and so we know that we need to stay alert. Next slide, please. So I'll start out here with our response to intervention program, which is very streamlined. In Tier One, students who are on or above grade level are going to be part of the Junior Grade Books program. So Junior Grade Books fosters dialogue, vocabulary, and comprehension, and there's a writing component. So it'll help to accelerate the students who are currently on grade level or above. Our Tier Two students will participate in the morphology program I was discussing. So again, starting in grade three, you begin to see that need for structural analysis because those words become multi-syllabic and more complex. Usually in grades four and five, you see, you start to see kids needing to access Greek and Latin in order to read the prefixes, suffixes, and roots. So morphology will provide them with a structured, systematic approach to learning how to break apart words and put them back together. So we hope that will help all of our students, obviously, but especially our E and L students. And then Tier Three, Orton Gillingham remains for any student that is still struggling with phonics because that's the key component of the Orton Gillingham program. So kids may be able to transition from Orton into morphology. That would be our goal. And then eventually from morphology into Junior Grade Books. But for now, we have a pretty structured approach, and we feel like this is going to meet the needs of a lot of our kids who experience that pandemic loss. Next slide, please. So now I want to talk a little bit about the core program. I think you realize that Journeys has sunsetted. So they're no longer printing that program. The online components are no longer available. So we'll be moving to propose this adoption for grades three to five. So Sabas My View has an interactive student edition. So you have a hard copy that is consumable, so kids can highlight it, write in it, take notes for themselves, annotate. But they also have those same options for the digital edition. We know we're moving to computer-based testing across the state, so it's important to us that our kids have this type of access, right? Journeys was adopted quite a while ago, and it didn't have some of these features. So we're excited to be able to provide our students with these opportunities. So in the interactive student edition, again, they can annotate, they can highlight, they can work in the digital text. They can either use the consumable hard copy. They'll have a new one for the class over here, or they can use the digital edition. Next slide, please. We're also excited about the project-based inquiry that's built into this particular program because we always know how important it is for our kids, not only to feel connected to the work that they're doing, and that project-based opportunity is one of those ways to help connect the kids, but it's also, it's also going to provide them opportunities to compare across texts, do the research, practice their listening and speaking in presentations. They have a self-assessment, so they own the project. And then there's obviously writing opportunities embedded here. Next slide, please. This particular program also, again, talking about the computer-based testing opportunities, provides customizable assessments that our teachers can use as well as a essay score and essay scores. So when students type their essays into that format, it provides them with feedback. So it'll analyze how they're performing on particular essays and let them know areas of strength and weakness. Next slide, please. And something that the committee especially liked was the social emotional component. So embedded in daily instruction are opportunities for students to work toward the five pillars of SEL. So this incorporates things like collaboration, problem solving, perseverance in your work. There's daily opportunities to practice those five key strategies. I think you can see a picture here of goal-setting opportunities that are provided by the program. So the teacher can have students set goals for their inquiry projects, for assignments that they have, and have those conversations because it's structured into the actual lessons. Next slide, please, Admire. And you can also see that it is inclusive and equitable in the sense that the team ensured there were positive images of gender roles and special populations in the particular program. So we hope this will help not only address some of the struggles kids have had during the pandemic, allowing them to have conversations and self-reflect, but also begin to develop some of that collaborative environment in the classroom. We know that kids who were home, perhaps isolated during the pandemic, may have struggled when they came back into the classroom to adapt to that type of social situation again. So we anticipate that this will be sort of a bridge for many of those students. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to conclude with a quick summary from Ed Reports, which is, it's an organization that rates different programs. And you can see they gave their highest rating to the Sabas My View for third, fourth, and fifth grade in terms of text complexity and quality, which also includes vocabulary, knowledge building, and then usability of the program itself. Next slide, please. So this is just an excerpt from the grade three section of the Ed Reports. This is talking about anchor texts. So this particular program meets the criteria for anchor text being of publishable quality and worthy of especially careful reading and consider a range of student interests. So you can see some specific examples they pulled out from the program at grade three. So for example, Unit One, Week One, the students read Grandma and the Great Gourd retold by Chitra Banerji, Di, 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 it's a Bengali folk tale. In Unit Two, Week Four, they read Welcome Back Wolves and Wolves Don't Belong in Yellowstone. And Unit Three, Week Five, they read various poems, including Firefighter Face, Miss Stone, The Race, In Daddy's Arms, and The Wright Brothers. So again, the Ed Reports has deemed these texts to be well worth students' time and attention. Next slide, please. Here's a sample from grade four because I talked about the importance of academic vocabulary instruction. This program also targets morphology, so there's a spoken sequence for the morphology as well. But here, we know that the focus on academic vocabulary, so rich, rich words, will really support our Ls because we saw their data earlier, and we know that we need to continue to build their vocabulary. But really, it will support all students because academic vocabulary, that Tier Two vocabulary, is the type of words you encounter across all texts, across all subjects. The older you get, the more complex that text gets, and so you need to have a grasp of the academic vocabulary. So Ed Reports rated that strongly for grade four. And then in, there's just an excerpt, I tried to pull one from each grade level. So if you go to the next slide, please, Admire. I pulled out the grammar from grade five. You can see that this was one particular standard that was being addressed, explaining the function of conjunctions, prepositions, and interjections in general, and their function in particular sentences. So they pulled out some examples of where this program was meeting or exceeding the standards in terms of grammar instruction. Because we know that grammar is also one of the things that can hold our students back when they're trying to access a more complex text. So it's really important that we solidify our grammar instruction. And I will say that has not been our strong suit in the past. So it's something that I'm excited to, to work on, especially at these grade levels. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take some questions.
Thank you. Entirely focused on student outcomes. We will go in reverse alphabetical order to take questions. Board Member Woods, any questions or comments?
Um, my question would be, the materials that you're using, how diverse culturally relevant are they? Because the comments I'm always getting is that if I don't see myself in the book, if I don't see African-Americans portrayed as something other than slaves or whatever, if it isn't inspiring and encouraging me, I don't want to read it. So for me, that's what makes children learn, be interested, and focused, is that the books reflect them and affect them positively. So that's, that's what I ask about all materials.
So this, members of the CLRI program were on the committee when this was reviewed. And I will also say we're going to continue to use the Rising Voices series that was adopted last year, which is 100% culturally diverse. So any point where we might see a gap, we're going to make sure we address that.
Very good. Board Member Shuda.
Hi, good presentation. Thank you, Anne. I have a question. The UFLI Foundations Program, where was it piloted? Was it piloted in urban?
So I can get that information for you. I'm sorry.
Okay. It's off, but thank you.
Board Member McCutcheon.
Presentation, I do not have any comments or questions.
Thank you. Board Member Mcozy.
So I think it was a great presentation. Obviously, you need a drink of water. That was a whole lot, and you did it pretty quick. But I have very similar, I wouldn't say concerns. I know we're on top of it by bringing CLRI into the mix, but we have a lot of, I guess, catching up to do. So just maintaining that balance is so crucial and key with a community that just, you know, the diversity is insane, and I don't have to tell anybody, you know, that. But I'm, I'm very also in tune with that, what that looks like as people are, there are people who are frustrated or, you know, we have parents and caregivers who, I don't like this book for my child. So it's almost like an educational piece where folks might almost stand in the way because of what they believe. So we have to be on top of our game at all levels are, you know, a part of the learning journey for our children, especially those who are coming from different countries or do not see themselves reflected in our materials. So thank you for being conscious and aware.
And I do, I also should have added, we, we're about to deliver Classroom Libraries K through six to, for our Native American indigenous authors. So we've got, we've curated a collection there that will also be given to the schools. So one of the things I think is important is that as we solidify foundational skills and academics, the oral vocabulary with the younger ones, they can access those texts, right? So we'll continue to bolster our classroom libraries and provide those resources to our kids because we know that as, as we develop their foundational skills, they can access texts that might have been out of their reading range in the past. So we're going to continue to make sure we support the program that way as well.
Can I ask a follow-up question? It is about curriculum. Can you just verify something that I have heard from administration, but also from the community, that the Native American cultural resource persons will be spending, is it a week in different schools throughout the summer school, the summer school months in order to bring about the programming, Native American programming? I just wanted to make sure that was something that I got directly from you.
No, that is correct.
Okay.
And our Pre-K six hubs. So we have a smaller number of people working over the summer. One of them will be stationed at central registration to make sure they can address any questions that families might have when they come to register their students. The other two will rotate through the Pre-K six summer hubs. So they'll spend about a week at each site, and they'll, they'll be delivering cultural lessons to the, all the students in the group.
Thank you so much.
Board Member Hurd.
Can't hear you.
Still can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
While you're figuring that out, or if you can't figure it out, you can text into the comments your question. We'll go to Vice President Dr. Evans-Brown.
Hello, thank you, Vice President. My brain froze. Mary Scott. Chief Batachelle, that was an excellent presentation, very comprehensive. It looks like we've made small inroads in the area of reading since the pandemic. I guess my question is, I want to say, are we mandating kids to go to summer school? But I'm going to put it another way. Are we encouraging summer school for these children who are not meeting the benchmark in reading?
Well, you just gave me a perfect segue. You just gave me the perfect segue. We are definitely encouraging students to go to our programming, and we are also targeting our first graders. So if there's parents of first grade students listening, please come to our summer program. We hired specialists to deliver Orton Gillingham across the board to our first graders. So they'll placement test the students, they'll deliver the instruction in small group to every first grader throughout the course of the summer. So yes, definitely want to get that message out. And we're also obviously encouraging all of our Pre-K six students to attend because we think it'll bolster their skills.
Fantastic. Seems like we should have, maybe think about providing some kind of incentive to get them there. I don't know. Sometimes you have to use certain carrots, you know, with, you know, children and families. And I don't know what that is, but we need to think about something. But thank you.
Thank you.
President Belton-Cotman.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for breaking it down by the subgroups. I appreciate that. I have a couple of questions about the training, the professional development. And I don't know how to say this tactfully, but what is the incentive to a teacher to make sure that they're trained?
Well, it's mandatory. They don't have a choice.
Okay.
So we gave them two options. One, they could come and get paid if they chose to do it outside of school hours, or we'll pull them out of the classroom. We're trying to avoid that option because the other is less disruptive to instruction, but we will make sure that everyone is trained.
All right, Mr. Hurd, could you put, take your camera off, please? Could you take your camera off? Thank you. Thank you. All right. So why not teach the teachers aid and assistance as well?
They can't deliver instruction directly, but we can definitely give them support to help implement the program.
So what they've said to me is, is that oftentimes the teachers are not even there, and they're ending up with the classes. And so they would like to have the, the training done across the board as well. And I think it's a mistake not to do it, to at least expose.
You're talking about if they're substituting?
They're substituting, and that, by the way, that's another discussion we'll talk another time. But I just think that the teacher aides and assistants have shared that they're in the classrooms, that it does not hurt to provide some PD for them as well. So my question really goes to, as I started looking at these numbers, first of all, I want to go on record to say anything coming out of Florida right now, I'm questioning. When the NAACP issues a national warning for Hispanics and Black people to stay out of Florida and not support Florida, I'm court questioning anything that comes out of their educational system, knowing that they have removed over 10,000 authors of brown and Black descent from, and their books off of their shelves. Okay, so for me, I'd like to see more about it because I'm not just okay with Florida anymore. And I'm sure you may be comfortable, and you're the professional in this, but I'm going on record to say that anything coming out of Florida needs to be looked at double, triple time and make sure that it meets the needs of all children's needs. I'm glad to hear that it's something that has been used before, but I am not just simply going to allow things to come into Buffalo from Florida and not have it looked at, not when the NAACP has gone on record to say, Black and Brown people stay out of Florida. Okay, there's a tack on you in Florida. So I just want to throw that out here.
That particular program would be more about the foundational skills than any other type of thing, so it wouldn't necessarily be text-heavy or anything. It does have some decodables, so I can make sure there's a thorough review to ensure that there is nothing questionable, but it would be the phonics component that we're looking at.
Well, that's great. I still wanted to be double-checked, Madam Superintendent. It is coming out of Florida, and I have, I'm not going to Florida. I was planning to go to Florida in September. I am not going to visit my best friend this year because of what's going on in Florida. I'm not spending money in Florida, period, at this point. So I just wanted to put that little commercial out there, just so you know. Okay. But anyway.
So they go back and do a, a different review on top of what they've already done.
Okay, so I guess, Madam Superintendent and Chief Academic Officer, when I look at the subgroups, the questions that come to my mind are, how many teachers are not taught or have not been trained in the professional development when the children are receiving the lowest, the lowest numbers? Okay, in other words, in the schools, and I'm hoping that this report is differentiated by schools as well, that you are able to look at what building is doing, and that is, you're able to tell if there's growth in these buildings or non-growth, and that that conversation, I'm assuming, is being had because we talked about that before. But I'm curious to know what teachers have not been taught and what's going on in their classrooms. Because when you say that it is our goal to have them all taught by September, I don't feel that if a teacher in September is not ready to go into the classroom, I don't feel that the children should be penalized as a result of it. So I'm trying to figure out what the solution for that.
Sure, no one, no one would be penalized. So we have existing materials for phonics. So until someone completes the training, they still have the materials we used this year in the classroom.
Yeah, but they don't have the results. The previous material does not have the results, according to what you said, that the Orton Gillingham has. And so that's the reason for questioning that. So yes, give, give, give the schools that have the teachers who are not coming to training or whatever, who have not been trained, let them continue to go down the same road that they've been down, when in essence, there is a tool that can help them move to the next level. And without looking at, without looking at that data, you'll never know why the growth is not happening in a building. Because you're going to assume that, assume something that's not accurate. And I really would like to make sure that we're looking at those numbers. Let's see, question, this is in regards to professional development. Under the new contract, did we get any more new professional development days?
No, because the superintendent conferences are, that's four from the state, I believe. However, we continue to offer the 1-200, and we've had a terrific response from our staff. They really are coming to training. The ones that, that aren't able to, and there are obviously legitimate reasons why someone might not be able to come, for example, on Saturdays. So. So we're going to be working to pull them into an embedded cohort in the early fall so that they do receive the training because we don't want, we obviously don't want students not to have that experience.
Thank you. So I'm on my math, I'm on my math broom. I'm writing my math broom and I would like to be on record to say that I personally feel that when ELA numbers are reviewed, that math should also be reviewed, that for me, they are hand in hand. There's not one without the other. And I would like to see what's going on with our children in math as well. I would personally like to make sure, Madam Superintendent, that every child who is not at where they should be, a letter is sent to their parents, informing them and inviting them to participate in summer school. I think that that would be a nice gesture. And I think that at the end of the summer, hopefully, we will see more proof. My final issue or question or concern addresses the math in this district. I'm very proud of what is going on with our math department. The math league for the past three weeks, their banquet has been phenomenal. Madam Superintendent, I would like to see if we can bring the top performers for each of the math leagues down and honor them. If the other children want to come, maybe it's something we can do as a kickoff in September to get our kids up and running or something. We don't have to do everything this year. But I really would like to highlight the excellence because that competition, the high performance schools and things, kudos to, to John, Deloitte, Mrs. Wagstaff, kudos to Jadaan Wagstaff, Jared Hurd-Hort and Kelly Baldow, as well as your Chief Academic Officer, Batacelli as well. But kudos to them. But I think in September, our first meeting really needs to be a kickoff of the excellence that our children have done, not just in math. Maybe we can highlight sports, maybe we can highlight so that we can get them pumped up to get the reading or whatever, get them pumped up to move forward. So thank you for the presentation. The only other question I really have, and I'm gonna put it in the finance department's head or the finance operation, I want to see a, something that shows how much effort and art money made it to the classrooms. In other words, of the money that was spent, I want to know what actually impact did this money have and how much was sent or being spent in the classrooms, directly impacting students? I really think that we need to take a look at that because we still have some money left and I want to make sure. But I really am, for my district, I am going to personally ask for a breakdown of what this report looks like for the ferry district. I want to know my weakest links and my strongest links in my district. I just want to go on record for that. Thank you.
And I can just say, I know Jadaan really appreciated when she saw you and Dr. Evans-Brown at the math banquet, so thank you. And I'm not sure if anyone else was able to make some of the other ones, but it's nice to see.
Well, I do it every year. I do it every year and I enjoy it and I have fun with the children and I'm seeing them in the community now and at the supermarkets and they're recognizing me because I think they call me the fanatical board president because we have a ball. Too bad it wasn't recorded. This is the type of stuff, Madam Superintendent, that can go miles if we start recording the success of our students and putting it on our website, the work that those kids do. And kudos to the teachers. They were volunteers. You know, I have no understanding why they were required to be volunteers, but I thank them that they were. But I do feel that they are entitled to receive something for the work that they do as well, but I appreciate the work that they're doing. But I think next year we'll have more. So thank you so much for listening. Mr. Hurd?
Are you able to, are we able to hear you?
Yes.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. I'm just gonna be short because it's kind of loud here, but my only question that I had was, I didn't see any data about the Native American population. I looked through the chart, but do we have anything to reflect on the DIBIT scores or the?
That wasn't an option when I, I don't believe that was an option in the platform, but I can go back and double check. At some grade levels, we might not have enough students to generate a very accurate report, but I can ask OSA to take a look for us.
I just know from previous information you gave us earlier this year, that they wasn't far and well. I just wanted to make sure that we can also have a track of them also so that we can probably, you know, get them the best services also as we continue to move forward to grow our district. Thank you so much for a great presentation and I'm looking forward to see that information.
Can I have asked one more, can I talk to the superintendent one more time about something? So it came up in the Athletic Committee meeting about our seventh and eighth graders and how there's normally a situation where they don't, that group of students don't really show up well for summer school. And so in that conversation, because we do have the resolution and the guidelines in place that says that students have to, that we want athletic scholars and that they have to maintain a certain average or success in the classroom. I would like to, and I know this is gonna be controversial, so just get ready for it, but I would like to have the discussion if our children, our seventh and eighth graders who are not on par, who are failing subjects, do not attend summer school to take those subjects, as to whether we should consider not allowing them to participate in sports in the fall. The only reason I'm trying to be strong about it is, is that we have, we have a situation with our seventh and eighth graders, Madam Superintendent, that they are not where they're supposed to be. And if Chief Batacelli brought up the data, you would see that. But we cannot have children failing two and three subjects and not coming to summer school. And I don't understand, academics is first. Okay, and so if that can be a carrot, all I'm trying to do is use it as a carrot to get the students in the building so that they can start improving that seventh and eighth. You got to understand, those are the students who we deliver to our high schools. Okay, so it is very important that we get a handle on those seventh and eighth graders as soon, as much as possible, particularly after coming off of COVID. So I, you know, that's your bellywag, but I really want you to consider what we can do because traditionally, that is the group that does not show up to summer school. That is the group.
Absolutely. We do know that. I think it's something that is worthy of a discussion. It is absolutely worthy of a discussion.
Why should you be allowed to play basketball and you're failing three subjects, four subjects?
All right, board members, we are over our time and we have another item on our agenda. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Williams to close up this agenda item and transition us to our next agenda item, the YZed update. Thank you, Chief Batacelli.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Chief Chair, Hurd, Chair, Hurd was saying something?
Yes, I'm going in and out. Yes, to answer that, that's something that our modified sports program is designed to help handle with the mentoring, counseling, tutor and also training aspects of it. So some of those things, the issue with the children that does not come to summer school or not advancing very well during seventh or eighth grade, that tutoring and the counseling are all part of that program to help those individuals, you know, be interested in school and sports and try to do the best in performance. I'll give the floor.
Can I just ask? Quickly. I apologize. I want to just ask, Board Member Hurd, these programs and all the things that are in place for modified sports or what we're gonna call middle school sports moving forward, can the board receive documentation of everything that's in place? Because I feel like I didn't know anything about a mentoring program for our seventh and eighth graders and I'd love to be able to know what's in place so I can advocate on that and tell parents that that exists. I'm not sure like where that is and if you did a presentation, I apologize that I might have missed it, but any documentation that's gonna uplift our student athletes in the middle school level, I would love to see that because there's a lot going on where parents don't know what's happening. So I'm just asking, you brought it up.
Okay, thank you. We're just waiting for approval with the superintendent and the president to move forward with that. The documentation has been working on for quite a while now and we're just waiting for some more programs to formulate with the Athletic Department, working with Mr. House, Ramona Reynolds and also Mrs. Watson and just to formulate the plan to get that out. So it should be out soon and we also have, I believe, nine sports that's operating right now with the modified program and with those elements that you're talking about with the counseling, training and tutoring.
Thank you. So thank you for that, but I still would like the superintendent to look at the fact that we have to put some sort of, something in place to make sure that these children are coming to summer school. And these are, this is the group that is not showing up and mentoring year round is a great thing, but we have to put academics first. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Williams, go ahead.
All right, okay. Thank you so much, Chief Batacelli, for, I think, a presentation that gave us all a lot of information. I do just want to share that, you know, in addition to the work that's being done during the year, we have a very robust summer program that we're hosting. We are partnering with the mayor on the summer reading program. We're keeping our finger to the pulse and doing exactly what President Cotman talked about, looking school by school at which schools are growing and at what rate and which schools are not so that we can target and provide support for those schools. I know that Hurd Department is working with Dr. Morell's department. We want to make sure that that inclusivity part is there. That's very important as Board Members McCosey and Woods both shared, that's very, very important. And so even when they were looking at adopting a new program, they were very involved in making sure that there was diversity that, you know, was a part of the programs. I think our next step for me for next year, I'm gonna be very assertively trying to engage parents on how they can also help their children with understanding and learning to read. So that's something that, you know, we'll be working on next year and I can see that, you know, Chief Batacelli is looking like, really, I haven't had a chance yet to talk with her about it, but that's where we're going. And I think this leads right into our next presentation, which is talking about YZed, which is really, really exciting to see. It's really exciting to see and it's a brainchild of the Apple co-founder Steve Wozniak. And, you know, I got to meet him, he shared his story on how he was not necessarily a great student in school, but things like being able to use his hands, think creatively, think critically are what really helped him and led him to become the co-founder of Apple, you know, for us to be able to engage our students. And I'm very proud to say that we are the first large urban pathway district, not in New York State, but in the world, in the entire world. And we know that across the world, everybody uses Apple products. So we're gonna hear from Perrette Walker, who is our specialty program officer, and she's gonna share, she's been on the job for just a few months, but she's already making an impact. So she will share some information on YZed and where we are with things.
Thank you so much, Madam Superintendent. It is a pleasure to be with all of you this evening. We want to begin with the first slide as we talk about YZed, about our five by 25 EPS goals from YZed and from our superintendent. And of course, that is an angle two.
Yeah, that's the wrong presentation though, too. Can everybody that's on, except for Mrs. Walker, please mute? We're getting a lot of feedback here. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Honorable Board Member Scott. Next slide, please. Thank you. We're going to be just giving you an update on YZed and as I mentioned before, this is under number two for our superintendent's initiative for five by 25 goals and it is providing access to educational excellence and accelerating learning. I want to give you just a brief overview of what's going on with YZed, which of course is emphasis is being placed on problem solving, collaboration and technology. But for the distribution of materials, we have a ton of materials at school number 187. But after speaking with Mr. Booker from the service center, he has assured me that he is going to be transferring those items to the service center and then processing them, sorting them and delivering them to schools and we are going to be doing so, he's going to be doing so, he should be by September. The teacher training. Most of our instructional coaches, you can please stay on that slide for a bit, the previous slide. Thank you so much. The teacher training for instructional coaches has taken place, it has taken place months ago. However, Megan Miller, who was the chief academic officer of YZed, would like to do a refresher training for instructional coaches and train our high school teachers who haven't been trained yet. So that's going to be taking place in late September so that we can get the program rolling out. Then of course, our instructional coaches will return Kini training to our teachers and we're going to be doing that during our grade level meetings. Our YZed summer plan, we're going to continue partnering with Say Yes as we did last summer. And last summer, we had 13 sites and this year, we're going to have 14 new sites. So we're very excited about that, that the program will be expanded. In the summer programs, the camps will be provided with the animation kit and students will be, of course, using that kit and providing, be provided with hands-on activities. I am going to be visiting every single site throughout the summer just to make sure that the program is being implemented, answering questions and making sure they have everything that they need to run the program successfully. Our school plan for 2324 is a simple one. We really want this program rolled out early in the school year from K through 12. I'm working with Mrs. Crystal Benton in staff development and we're going to be providing embedded in the workday training because we found that, I found that in the, in the past when we had training and not many people attended, not many people showed up, the attendance was very poor. We're very serious about this program. It's very important, it's a district initiative, therefore, we're going to make sure that training takes place during the school day. Again, Megan Miller will be taking care of that for us. Also, we're gonna be planning our second annual YZed showcase, which was a huge success. That's going to be taking place as well. It was very exciting and of course, it did include six schools and we're hoping to expand it to many more. We're going to have a YZed conference in 23, 2023 and that pathway conference will take place in November, the 2nd through the 4th. And that's in Arizona. And some of our principals and teachers will be joining us along with our Honorable Board Member President Sharon Belton Cotman. Now, next slide, please. Thank you. So they had a chance to really showcase YZed in two different ways this year. The first one was with the summit, with the parent engagement summit, where the students built our robots with our robotics program. And then, of course, we had our big first annual YZed showcase that I mentioned earlier that featured six schools and that was very, very successful and well attended and we are going And that was very, very successful and well attended. And we are going to continue using that platform to to really showcase YZ and to let people know or show people and share with the public just what YZ is all about. And it was a great program that was student-led, great activity that was student-led, and supported by principals at our six schools. So we're going to continue that next year and again, hopefully have even more participation. And I just want to thank the principals of those six schools, Nathaniel Barnes of School 61, Ms. Marquita Bryant at 64. We also had Mr. Johnson at School 54. And Max Grundy, he is the supervisor of career in technology education, representing 74, along with the principal, Mr. Cook, and Ray Farrell, who represented as the YZ designee, as our science teacher at MSTP with Principal Will Mac. And at this time, I want to share with you what YZ looks like at the elementary level, the middle school level, and the high school level. So we have two principals that will be sharing with you what the program looks like in their buildings, Mr. Nathaniel Barnes and Mrs. Ms. Marquita Bryant, followed by Mr. Grundy, who is going to be sharing with you what YZ looks like at the middle school level, and Mr. Ray Farrell, who will share with you how YZ is being implemented at the high school level. So at this time, it's my pleasure to present Mr. Barnes. Next slide, please.
Good evening, Superintendent Williams and esteemed board members. At Arthur Eve for the 2022, 2023 school year, we had the honor of piloting the YZ program at our building. At Arthur Eve, we have two specialized programming, art integration program and a gifted and talented program. And that which bridges both specialized programming is creativity. So we were able to adopt the YZ program as a platform for teaching creativity. And this program was taught by our gifted and talented teacher to all students who attend our school. You may be thinking, how exactly did the gifted teacher teach this to all students? Well, here at Arthur Eve, if you look to the right of the slide, you will see an enrichment triad model. We follow a school-wide enrichment model. So regardless of the fact, if a student is identified as gifted or not, all students receive type one instruction, which is exploratory activities. So we were able to use the YZ program, which the goal of YZ is to build an engineering mindset within students. And as I stated, considering the fact that creativity is the nucleus of our programming, we were able to use YZ as a platform to incorporate our approach of teaching students critical thinking skills and really helping them to massage or cultivate that trait of creativity within them. Next slide, please. This here slide gives you some insight as to what YZ looks like in real time at Arthur Eve. If you look to the bottom left of the slide, you will see type one instruction, 3D printing. So this here is an example of third grade students applying their understanding of a critical thinking strategy we teach called FOE. It is a acronym for fluency, flexibility, originality, and elaboration to create a bumblebee. So the photo represents the 3D figure before and after revisions. So the last letter of that acronym stands for elaboration. So you see the bumblebee when it was just a round 3D figure. And then after the student was required to elaborate and make some revisions, you see what it came to be, if you will. If you follow the arrow to where it says animation, level two, this is students making animated clips of handmade clay models connected to the retelling of stories that were explored. So the students explore certain stories and gifted and talented type one instruction, and made clay models, and then they use their devices to animate those models, if you will, using the YZ approach. If you follow the arrow, you will see more 3D printing. This is an entire class and type one instruction, using what we call the design thinking process steps to work collaboratively to create a 3D model. And if you look in the bottom right-hand corner, you see what that turned out to be. So you see the process of that bear, the beginning of the animation process, if you will, on the student's device. And then you see the product where the student actually is holding this 3D figure. So we were very, very excited to adopt this program. And now that we've executed it for a full year, we're excited that we did. Thank you so much for your time. And I will turn it over to my colleague, Principal Bryant.
Good evening, Superintendent Williams and esteemed board members. Thank you so very much for having me on today. And if we can turn to the next slide, please. Thank you so very much. At Olmstead 64, we have a school-wide implementation model that we started during the 2122 school year. So the idea here was to ensure that students in grades K to four are exposed to the YZ career pathways. We developed a career pathway progression or progression map, if you will, to ensure that students have opportunities to engage in specific or specific kits at each grade level. That was done as a comprehensive approach to enhance our goals. And our primary goals were to provide learners with increased opportunities to engage in 21st century learning skills that align with both district goals and our school's vision and mission. And that was centered around innovation, creativity, as well as technology. The strategy that we used in order to implement such was that we worked as a school leadership team in conjunction with grade level science and math teachers. And we utilized backwards planning to review the BPS curriculum and pacing guides to determine how specific YZ kits could front load and or supplement problem-based learning using creative problem-solving strategies. For example, our grade four teachers utilized the YZ drones level two kit, which was prepared for flight, as a supplement to enhance Science Unit One, the energy and motion from the BPS curriculum. So students had enhanced opportunities to engage in project-based activities around energy, speed, and moving objects. Next slide, please. So here we just see some examples of some of the things that our students are and have been doing. So to the far left, we see kindergarten students working collaboratively, utilizing and controlling bot-y robots as a simple coding command. So even in kindergarten, our students are able to utilize robots and develop and learn simple coding skills and commands. So there you see students are utilizing the iPad. And to the left in that corner, you see the bot-y robot. They are actually using the iPad to give coding commands to that robot. So for example, they can code the robot to move forward, left, right, et cetera. The next two images you see there are images of second grade students applying their knowledge of air pressure and technology to enhance their understanding of how objects travel through the air. So they're learning about flight essentially here. And that is a drones level one kit. So you can't see it, but to the far left, that picture, they are looking at different objects such as balloons. They may be looking at flights, et cetera. And they're looking at how air pressure and all these other things contribute to flight and things being able to take off. In the far right-hand corner, our right side of that slide, that was from our YZ showcase. Here, we have third grade students utilizing and demonstrating cybersecurity, utilizing spiral minis to figure out a password by coding through a maze. So it was a pretty comprehensive and complex approach to utilizing cybersecurity and coding aspects along with a maze. And what's really great about that is that our third grade students actually had a lesson in which they were also demonstrating and teaching kindergarten students from another school how to actually code and utilize cybersecurity and passwords. I can also share out that our students are very excited about the programming. They are highly engaged. They are asking their teachers, when do we come back? How fun and exciting the lessons are? The teachers are actually motivated to utilize the kits and eager to use them. Our parents have been highly receptive. And it's also, in some cases, increase some of our parental engagement where they are also able to contribute to some of those skill sets, such as coding, and participate and help students with coding strategies and clubs, et cetera. Thank you very much for your time and for listening to me today. I turn it over to our next colleague.
Good evening, Superintendent Williams and honorable board members. I'm Max Grundy, supervisor of career in tech ed. If you could please advance to the next slide. All right. So when we, when YZ was first introduced to the district in the 2021, 2022 school year, we realized that the middle-level CTE course, technology education, was a perfect fit. The strands that we were, that we worked with YZ to bring into the district included engineering and design and as well as robotics. And we were able to see that the engineering design strand, the middle level or their level three would be able to be plugged into our existing design unit, which you can see the bullets of what we are set up already in our curriculum. And then the robotics strand became the focal project, the project-based learning for Unit 11, in which students design, implement, test, and evaluate a multi-system product. So after we worked with our technology teachers to integrate the YZ modules directly into our curriculum, we had YZ come in. Megan, who was mentioned before, came in and did a full-day training for our teachers so that every technology teacher in the district is delivering these units to every seventh and eighth grader that has technology. And if you can move on to the next one, please, I could talk a little bit about what that looks like in each classroom. So in each classroom, the design and engineering models were implemented in the spring of 2022. And on the left-hand side, you can see that students are busy designing and then 3D printing. Some, actually, they are going to be delivered to each of the board members at some point. I was hoping it was going to be today, but I don't think you've received them yet. Nameplates. Once again, these are, students are designing this all in a 3D modeling program and then sending it over into the 3D printers to have it made. It is a, an advanced step from what's happening at the elementary level. And then on the right-hand side, the robotics kits were just introduced this spring. The students have just gotten their hands on them. Right there, you can see a maze on a floor that one of the teachers designed and challenged the students to figure out how to program the robot the way through it. On the right-hand side, you see two students working together to build the actual robots. Students absolutely love the 3D printing when they can see their creations coming to life. And the early returns, you know, we did it for the first time now, but the early returns of the students are absolutely rising to the challenge of doing the robot building. So just want to thank Perrette Walker and the superintendent and President Belt and Kotman for bringing these in, because students are really enjoying it. So thank you very much. And I will turn this over to the next presenter.
Good evening. My name's Ray Farrell. I'm the computer science teacher at the Math Science Technology Preparatory School at Seneca. And I've been able to implement a few kits this year. The first two I want to talk about are the Level Four Robotics and the Level Four 3D Printing Design Kits. These kits are more open-ended than the earlier kits, and it allows the students to actually start to do some design work. The first step they want to talk about in their design process is to empathize. The students are kind of analyzing a problem that exists in the world that affects somebody else, not necessarily themselves. And they're trying to put themselves into that that mold and try to come up with a solution to that problem. So then they move on to the second step, which is to actually define the problem. And you see on the slide, it says that is one of the most crucial steps, because if they can't define what they're trying to solve, the solution will never come to them. So we spend a lot of time in this step, trying to define, trying to figure out all the different possible solutions there. Then they move into the design process. This can be done analog. Some of the early projects are really just using things like paper and cardboard to get their ideas out there. And then we move into the 3D printing, the 3D and the circuit design. Once they get to design, we move to that implementation stage. For them, it's going to be either designing 3D prints. It's going to be building circuits, which will have the code or get code for, which is written in C++. Then that last step is the testing. Everything works great. There's probably still improvements to be made. So this process becomes a continual loop. And they're kind of always going back and they're saying, okay, did I meet my needs? Did I meet the problem? Did I define the problem properly? What can I do to improve this? So those are the first five steps in that design thinking process. And then if we could advance to the next slide. The next thing I want to talk about is collaboration. These problems are complex. Learning new technologies is complex. Wiring circuits is complex. Different students are going to pick up on different concepts of this. And then they're able to work together and kind of build a cohesive model together. All of these projects are touching on cross-curricular skills, reading, math, science. Some of the things we did for like the YZ showcase was using the speed of sound to calculate distance. These are advanced concepts that the kids are implementing into code. And then the last one is anybody that participates, this is going to get increased technical skills. And the one thing I probably didn't mention in the slides is the one promise I make to all my students is, no matter what, by the time you leave this program, these these classes, you're going to think differently. You're going to be more analytical. You're going to look at problems differently. You're going to want to analyze. So that's just a little, a bit of what we have gone on at MST at the high school level. And I could turn that over to Mrs. Walker.
Thank you so much. Thank you. You all did a wonderful job. Thank you very much for sharing the wonderful things that you all are doing with YZ in your buildings. Thank you very much. And as I close, I just want to really thank our honorable board member, President Sharon Belt and Kotman, as well as the superintendent, because without these two ladies, this program would not be in the Buffalo Public Schools. And our students would not have this wonderful opportunity to participate in such a great program that really emphasizes collaboration and problem solving and technology, and just really preparing students for today's workplace. So I want to thank you so much. And this concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker, and to all of our presenters. We'll go in alphabetical order this time. And keep in mind, board members, that we are well over our time and into Mrs. Schuda's, Mrs. Schuda's Educational Support Committee. So keep your comments and questions brief. President Belt and Kotman.
I'm not going to say much. I just want to say that I want to thank, in addition to the parties, the staff, Matt Grundy, and I also want to give a shout out to Kelly Bardot, because Kelly was very instrumental in seeing the vision and carrying it along with her, along with Chief Academic Officer Anne Betticelli. So that's all I have to say. This is just the tip of the iceberg. There's so much more that we can do with this. And this is what learning is about. I would like to ask the one question to the principals and even the teacher, Ray Farrell, I hear so much about how great you are. Has this improved attendance? And has this helped improve discipline within the schools? I'm just curious. Anyone can answer. Okay.
President Kotman, I'll respond to that. It certainly has supported attendance here at School 61, because type one instruction, students don't know when it's scheduled. Only the adults know. So students come to school each day saying, do we have robots today? Do we have information today? They don't know when it's occurring. So it certainly is giving them some extrinsic motivation to come to school, to your point.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Vice President, Dr. Evans Brown.
Hello. Great presentation, Ms. Walker and colleagues. One of the questions I have is, I know you are planning to expand YZ throughout the district. I would like to see some of my schools on the east side be selected to participate, you know, in this YZ initiative. And so do you know how you select these schools and for the next year, for example?
Are you referring to the showcase?
This was rolled out district-wide. Okay, so be clear about that. Paul, let's not on that.
Are you referring to the showcase?
No, I'm referring to the participation in the schools, because I think I heard you say.
Yes, everyone. Yes, it is in every building.
Oh, it's in every building?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Well, that's good to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Miss Board Member Heard, are you still with us? Doesn't look like it. Board Member McCosey.
I find this to be a great presentation. To know that it's in all the schools is fantastic. I think it's on us as district now to make sure that it's being, all principals and everyone are engaging on the same levels. Some principals may not be taking advantage of this in ways that other schools might be. Then it becomes an equity issue, and it's on us as a district. And I'm going to keep pushing for us to be, to make the standard, to create the power that this is something that if it's this successful so early on, we should be jumping on. And if we are the first one worldwide, then why wouldn't we be uplifting this in every level at every school? I'm with Dr. Evans Brown is I wasn't sure if it was in my school. So maybe it's, you know, I'm not putting any, pointing any fingers, but we as a district should make sure we start putting power on what's going to advance BPS, but also advance our children and give them options that are outside of the box for them to learn. And you guys did a great.
Thank you, Board Member McCosey. I think Board Member McKeckin could not make this this time. Board Member Shuda.
I would just like to echo that. I really found the presentation informative, and my questions were answered throughout the presentation. So I have no further comments.
Thank you. Board Member Woods.
Yes, when they opened the presentation, they said that this program was rolled out at six schools. They named the schools. And the presentation is excellent. The WASZED program is excellent. And I know that my principal at Waterfront School was extremely interested in the WASZED program because he already was doing things of that nature with 3D presentations and 3D learning. So can you explain in a little bit more detail what schools this was rolled out at what level? And what were you saying about it was at six schools? So I, I'm just a little confused from what you presented in the beginning.
What I presented in the beginning, that the showcase presented six schools, the WASZED showcase featured six schools, but the program is K through 12. So the program is in every single school building in our district. Some schools unfortunately-
And can you, can you continue? You're saying is it every school district at what level? What are you, what are you saying? A little more detail.
I am saying that it's in every building. Every building has the WASZED program. However, there are some buildings who unfortunately didn't roll out as quickly as, for instance, the six schools that I selected to be involved in the showcase. They're a little slow in rolling it out. And because I just came on in a couple of months, I wanted to feature those schools who were already really involved in the program. But every school has the materials, at least the first round of materials. Everyone will be getting the second round of materials. So every single school building has the materials to move forward with the program. And it is going to be, one of my, one of my roles is going to be to go around to every school just to make sure it is being implemented and to make sure that they have everything that they need to do for the program. To participate in the program.
Have you had a chance to visit Waterfront? And can you say anything about what's happening at that program? I would have thought they would have been part of a showcase because I know the principal was just, I mean, in love with the program.
Well, that's great to hear. And we will be expanding the showcase to include other schools. So hopefully Waterfront can participate in the showcase next year. We'll be happy to have them. And no, I have not visited Waterfront.
Point, point of correction, or just so that, would you share again the six schools so that Mrs. Woods can know which six schools were involved?
Well, I heard the six. I didn't hear any of mine. No problem.
That's why I never want her to share it again. So you can hear that School 99 was involved. Hello.
Is that one of your schools? Well, yes, School 99 wasn't-
99 is definitely one of mine.
Well, it was definitely in the showcase.
Well, thank you.
Anything else, Board Member Woods?
I'll be visiting all my schools. That's, that's out of mind. It's a great program. Thank you for the presentation.
So-
Thank you. Great comment.
Thank you, board members. I, I just want to also expand on how this is being rolled out district-wide. To be blunt, I have a fourth grader and a seventh grader, and they're in two different schools. And I am unaware of them having any exposure to this, this program. I know that we, as a board, made a significant investment in WASZED with the understanding that it was going to be rolled out district-wide. I'm certainly not placing any blame on anybody, but I do have a fourth grader who has been disappointed with his science or lack of science this school year. And I understand that math and ELA are a priority. They, they have to be, especially coming out of the pandemic. But I would like to know, and maybe it's not answered tonight, but I would like to know more about how it is being rolled out. And if it is K to 12, how that's happening, K to 12.
If I may, I can add a little bit if that's okay, Ms. Walker.
May I just say this too, though? If I can just say that, you know, we, so you can imagine K through 12, ordering the materials for 60 schools for all grade levels, there are lots of materials. So, you know, a part of getting it, you know, is, is, and she did share that she's in the process of getting the materials delivered from 187 into the schools. So all of our schools, you know, we're a district-wide program. And so all of our schools will be having, you know, the materials that they need. And, you know, Anne and her team really kind of catapulted at the beginning of this and, you know, identify which schools, which grade levels would have which materials. But, you know, the start of it all is really going to take a minute to get the inventory of all of the materials. They've been ordered. She ordered them for the whole district. We got them all ordered. They're here, but now they have to get out into the schools. So Anne, you go ahead and share a little bit about where we are with it.
Sure. So to Dr. Williams' point, the orders were placed, but in some cases, the materials weren't readily available. They had either a backlog or supply chain issues. So some of them came in staggered times throughout the year. So even though the initial rollout, schools had, at certain grade levels, had some kits that we had ordered for a different purpose originally. So they were able to start implementing those during RTI. We started by training schools with the instructional coaches so they could work with their teachers and get that rolling. Because initially, I remember we had started by saying we would do it for after-school. So we had some of those supplies on hand, and that's how we were able to start. And then other supplies have been coming in throughout the course of the year. And that's what Ms. Walker was referring to. Those will be distributed now directly to the schools. But the initial plan is that every single grade level will have access to, I believe, two kits. They vary a little bit by grade, but because we're a pathway district, we will be doing it at every grade. So at the secondary, it's actually an elective course that we're creating. So we're taking several kits and combining them into a course. So students will have that opportunity to take it at the high school level. And then we're phasing it into various RTI pathways at the elementary, occasionally a science, depending on where a kit might fit in with the technology standards. But so it wasn't quite as smooth in the very beginning as we would have liked, just because we didn't have all the materials readily available. But rest assured, by this school year starting in September, they should have materials for every grade level so that everyone is able to-
It wasn't just, you know, it was the materials. That was one piece. Another piece was finding time in the school day, you know, to be able to expose all of the students to it. And that was a little more complex than I think, you know, what we initially thought it would be. But because our strategic plan centers on equity, which means that, you know, if we're doing it for one school, certainly children at other schools should have the same opportunity. We went back to the table and thought about, you know, how can we make this work for everyone? We don't just want to offer it in after-school. We don't just, you know, want to offer it to certain grade levels and roll it up. We really wanted to do, because it's a great program, and the kids love it. I mean, it is, even our little learners that are kindergarten and, you know, pre-K, it's infectious when you go around and you see, and they're explaining to you, you know, all of the details on drones and animation. And, you know, I would have to believe that it does help with behavioral infractions because the children are working collectively. They're working collaboratively together. I've seen it every time I go out and I get to observe, you know, what they're doing. And, you know, they're able to explain in great detail about drones, and they're excited while they're doing it. I think it almost tricks them into learning. I don't even think they realize, you know, all of the science and mathematics and literacy and all of those things that are involved when they're doing it. They're just having fun, but they're also learning.
Absolutely. And that's why, that's why I raised that because our students need to have access to it because of how influential it can be on their learning. Absolutely. So we're off to a great start, and I'm hopeful that we're going to grow going into next school year.
Can I say this on behalf of the superintendent? The superintendent recognized that the program was not being moved out as it should have been. And so this is why the position, what the coordinating position was created. The schools had the, Kelly Baldow made sure that all the, every school had the kits. There were certain people that were enthusiastic about it, and they went and went online, read how to do it. Then there were certain people who had to be trained and who were pushing back. So this is the reason for creating that position and make sure that this grows. Every school has the kits. As to whether they decided to use them at that, at this point was their choice. But one particular person, you will remember board members, who came down to the board every month, was from School 99, Stanley Mikowski. She was a teacher who said she went online, read about it herself, rather than allow those kits to sit there and not be used. And she took it upon herself to self-teach herself because it really is an easy curriculum. And she rolled it out at School 99 herself with, early in the year, in addition to that. So I think, you know, it was there, whether, and I think parts of it were used, like in some schools, they just wanted to do the CD, the CD printing and things like that. So, you know, it has been there. And so you need to make sure as a parent that you ask the question, when is the principal going to make sure that your child gets, get it rolled out? Okay? Because the people who were enthusiastic did it, and some people have to be encouraged a little bit more. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Walker, and to all of our presenters. Again, Dr. Williams, any last thoughts before we turn it over to Board Member Shuda?
No, we're already over time. So we're just going to jump right in with Board Member Shuda and however she would like to begin her present, you know, her half of our committee meeting.
Okay, well, I think what we're going to do is, Dr. Williams, I'm going to hand it right over to you. We are going to talk about community-based organization evaluation and our MWBE monitoring.
All right. Thank you so much, Chairwoman Shuda. So you asked for it. You know, the board has been asking about, you know, the evaluation process. And I know that Board Member Woods is particularly interested in the MWBE, monitoring the process and what that looks like. And so I'm excited that tonight, we have three ladies, three of our cabinet members, who are going to be sharing information with you that I think you will find informative and will assure you that we are moving forward with the evaluation process for our school-based community partners, as well as with our MWBE monitoring. So I'm going to turn things over. I'm not sure who's starting, if it's Dr. Reynolds that's starting it out, but we'll have Dr. Reynolds, Dr. Brown, and our Chief of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Ms. Amos.
I mean, Chief Amos is actually going to start it off. Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Yes. So good evening and greetings, Madam Superintendent, Honorable Board Members, and listening and viewing audience. This evening's presentation, Community-Based Organizations' Evaluation and MWBE Monitoring, will be presented by me, Antoinette Amos, Chief of Diversity, Equity, and Chief of Student. I needed that slide. Thank you, Chief of Student Support Services, Dr. Ramona Reynolds, Chief of Athletics, Community Schools, Family, and Community Engagement. Next slide, please. So we're going to talk about, this is the agenda. So we'll do the introduction, talk about, our first section is where are we, where we will speak about equitable public spending, pre-qualified community partners catalog, Buffalo Public Schools compendium, community-based organizations evaluative tool. Then we will go into where we are going, where we will talk about next steps and timeline for the CBO evaluative tool. Then we will talk about how we will get there, and then entertain questions. Next slide, please. Where are we? Next slide, please. So when we talk about where are we, just as I believe a few of the speakers previously talked about, we are moving to the next level with one voice, one vision, one mission, and making efforts to fortify our connections with our community partners. The presentation aligns with each of the superintendent's five-by-five, five-by-25 goals. And if you guys don't mind, for the sake of time, I will not read those. I see nods. Okay. All right, next slide, please. So my portion is discussing equitable public spending. And if you see, look at the graphic, it's moving from equality to equity. Currently, our BPS MWE policy goal states that we will, to promote equality of economic opportunities for MWBEs, eliminate barriers to participation, and enhance the ability to compete. Said policy sets an MWBE participation goal of 25%. There are currently 4,961 active vendors in Bonfire, of which 119 or 2.2% are MWBEs. I am still combing through data. However, I can tell you that of those 119 MWBEs, they are currently 31 that has received funds, and this is a year-to-date number, and that number for those MWBEs is $3.8 million. Now, we, of course, I don't have the percent, the number of what percentage that is of the whole, but I will get that. We do have an equitable spending strategy, which is to really increase our outreach and marketing. We will have our MWBE recruitment materials. I plan to carry them everywhere with me because recruitment is an ongoing thing. We will increase our events. We already have the RFPQ meetings as led by Dr. Ramona Reynolds and her team, and we would like to attach ourselves to that. I speak as though I have a team. I'm talking about the DEI department. And we will also have our first, well, my first, NWBE vendor and contractor recruitment event, which will happen on August 2nd from 2:00 to 4:00, and we are hoping that you all will be able to join us. And the venue will be, is to be determined. We are also increasing our recruitment and under, for the purposes of DEI, we want to leverage community partnerships. But that's a little different than what we normally speak of when we talk about leveraging community partnerships. In this case, I am speaking to what the Honorable President, Ms. Belton Kotman, spoke of, not recreating the will. And therefore, I have reached out and partnered with the DEI teams from the city of Buffalo, as well as Buff State, Erie County MWBE Certification Office, and the Community Foundation for them to share their list of MWBEs with us so that we can recruit and pull from those as well. We will also increase our performance monitoring, and that includes the CBO evaluative tool, which Dr. Brown will speak to in a moment, and compliance auditing and monitoring of our vendors and contractors by me, or my office. In addition, to eliminate barriers to- In addition, to eliminate barriers to participation and enhance the ability to compete, we will increase the technical assistance, professional development. We have opened up the DEI implicit bias training to some of our vendors, mainly those who are client-facing or student-facing, parent-facing. In addition to that, we have resource provision. For example, the compendium and the PCPC, both of those, Dr. Brown and Dr. Reynolds will speak to soon. We have review and alignment. We want to make sure that we align our mission, our goals, our policies and procedures so that, you know, so that if you look at, if you look back at the top at what our policy currently states, it talks about equality, right? And so we want to make sure that those, all of those policies align. So we need to revisit some of our policies and change those to align with the superintendent's goals. And she talks about equity. In addition to that, and last on my list, is public reporting. So we will have, DEI will have a presence on the new BPS website, and that is where we will do public reporting as well as making sure that we touch and talk about all holidays that are relevant to our students and other activities. And for right now, that is it for me, and I am going to pass it on to Dr. Ramona Reynolds.
Thank you so much, Chief Amos. Greetings, Superintendent Williams, Honorable Board Members and our BPS community. So as you are all aware, BPS engages with numerous community-based organizations for different purposes. For today's presentation, our references to community-based organizations or CBOs will refer only to those contained within the pre-qualified community partner catalog or PCPC that you've heard referenced. I'll discuss the PCPC and Dr. Brown will discuss the BPS compendium and evaluative tool. Let's first take a quick look back. So originating from a concern that local grassroots organizations have historically not been considered for partnerships and contracts, we established a standardized infrastructure to increase local organization awareness and access of partnership opportunities by way of the BPS Students and Families Supplemental Programs and Services requests for pre-qualification. And we have dubbed it RFPQ. So where are we in this process? Well, based upon the board's feedback and to ensure that this process is as user-friendly as possible, under the leadership of the Office of Parent and Family Engagement in partnership with the Office of Strategic Alignment and Innovation, we've instituted a few updates which include the following. More consistent promotion and outreach regarding the RFPQ process, including website promotion, flyers and information distribution, more tabling opportunities, newspaper advertisements and social media promotion. We've transitioned from conducting a few informational meetings during the school year to ongoing virtual and in-person meetings. During these meetings, staff address questions and provide support to potential vendors to support them with submitting a proposal. A transition from receiving program proposals only twice a year to year-round during a rotating 10-week cycle. So during this cycle, the RFPQ is posted and active for eight weeks, whereby organizations have the opportunity to submit their proposals by way of Bonfire. The posting then closes for two weeks per cycle to allow the committee to rate the proposal submissions, notify the vendors, provide them feedback, as well as update the catalog with the newly vetted partner proposals. The Office of Parent and Family Engagement and Strategic Alignment and Innovation Teams then share the updated catalog with school and district leaders for contract considerations. And I subsequently share with Superintendent Williams' cabinet and the board. So Dr. Williams asked that I provide clarity regarding the process once a vendor has been vetted, considered pre-qualified and included in the catalog. At that point, they are eligible for a contract, but it doesn't necessarily mean that a contract will be awarded. After reviewing data and considering existing gaps within the schools or departments, if a school or district leader is interested in an organization's service or program, then they would work with the purchase department and the CBOs to determine specific services, programs that will be provided, desired outcomes, targeted audience, schedule and costs. And once all those details are finalized, a contract is developed. I'll say that OPFE and OSAI and the purchase departments have been extremely instrumental in providing direct vendor support during the contract development phase. Now this year, every school has been touched by at least one CBO from the PCPC who have provided either professional development programs or another type of supplemental service. So in an effort to provide our school and district leaders an opportunity to learn more about each pre-qualified community partner, we are now working on hosting a fair where the pre-qualified community partners will be encouraged to table, promote and meet face-to-face with school and district leaders. Because we recognize that it's one thing to read about a program proposal in a catalog, it's another thing to physically engage with a potential partner and ask questions. And so finally, at the end of their contract term, each pre-qualified community partner will be evaluated using the newly developed standardized evaluative tool that Dr. Brown will now discuss. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Chief Reynolds, and good evening, everyone. So as you are aware, our compendium, it was revised at the start of the school year. And Director Mai Wen and her team from the Department of Social, Emotional and Wellness Supports under the Division of Student Support Services, they really took a lead role in collecting the names of all CBO partners district-wide along with a brief description of the services offered. And that was really, it was a massive undertaking. As each school, as you can see through the compendium, when we reviewed it earlier this year, we have multiple partners. And the information was also shared with central office as we have many central office departments and divisions that have, that are contract owners because they partnership to support students at the school level. The compendium shifted from a PowerPoint back in 2018 with all the partners listed. And so now it's a catalog that is organized in a very colorful and user-friendly manner. And as you can see, the CBO support ranges from academics to social, emotional health and wellness enrichment and family support, just to name a few. Next slide, please. While the compendium reflects on how the organizations focus on providing various levels of student and family supports, we know how important it is to continue to work to strengthen our relationship between these organizations and the district to ensure alignment of service for students and families. We realize how large our district is, and this is really the first time we've ever done this. And as we continue to do research, we don't really see any other district that has taken this initiative. While they have certainly evaluative tools, maybe for community schools, nothing uniform that is used across the districts. The organization's outcome and deliverables, it definitely will be essential in increasing the impact of these services that they have on the student's success. Therefore, we knew that it was really important to conduct research. Dr. Williams charged the team with making sure they conducted research with the goal of gathering data to inform the development of a CBO evaluative tool that will be part of Phase One. And this year, Dr. Rosanna Topchin, she is the Program Evaluator for the Office of Shared Accountability. She did an amazing job and conducted basically a landscape review where she analyzed and surveyed responses from some of our CBO partners, particularly the ones that we've been working with for quite some time. One of the major recommendations from the landscape review was to seek additional information around the effectiveness of the CBO services that impact our students. In response to that landscape review, we created a cross-collaborative team, which the team, they were from several divisions. And you can see here, Student Support Services, Office of Parent and Family Engagement, Strategic Alignment and Innovation, Office of Shared Accountability, Curriculum Assessment, Instruction and Extended Learning. So again, we are just finishing up with Phase One. We did a lot this year. Phase One of the implementation of the CBO evaluative tool also included student voice. Dr. Rachel Dominguez, she's the Program Evaluator for the Division of Student Support Services. She met with our inter-high student council, and they're our district student leaders, just to receive some feedback about the compendium and the resources that are offered in the compendium. And then she asked them to share ideas for added resources that they would find interesting. And they really brought up a lot of awesome ideas, and we won't stop there. We will continue to elevate student voice throughout all phases of this implementation. And Dr. Dominguez and Topchin researched how to identify an evaluative tool that will effectively evaluate the CBOs. So this information was really critical to gather prior to the teams even working together. And Mir, can you please click the evaluative link? I'm sorry, can you go back and click the orange link? Thank you. Just to give you an idea of what it looks like, and I'll be brief. Okay, it's loading. Okay, so when the evaluators click the link, I'm sorry, we can make it a little larger. Thank you, Amir. So when the evaluator opens up the link, it takes approximately 10 minutes. It says it right, there's a prompt that's right there. And it takes about 10 minutes, keeping in mind that the goal is really for the evaluator to have like ongoing conversations with the CBO. We don't want it to be a situation where they're being evaluated and they haven't had any discussion throughout the, throughout the contract. And the CBO, the expectation is that they should be providing ongoing reports relating to the goals, which should make this too much easier to complete. And so all evaluators, if you can start scrolling down, and Mir, all evaluators should complete questions one through 21. Questions one through six, and if we could stop at item six. They primarily focus on the demographics. So if you'll see item six, it asks the evaluator to indicate if the CBO has an MWBE certification or other certifications, which is absolutely, you know, critical because as you heard Chief Amos say earlier today, she is really looking at the percentage of MWBE partners that we have in the district. Questions seven through section five uses a Likert scale of founded questionable, unacceptable and NA. And as I mentioned earlier, the program evaluators really spent a lot of time researching the best tools to use for, to build organizational capacity. And so we see here for question 10, if you could scroll down, Amir. It speaks to ongoing monitoring. That really keeps it in the forefront of the evaluator to say, how are we monitoring? What kind of data, what are the data points that we should be collecting throughout this partnership? And if you could please scroll down to question 20, Amir. And so it references DEI, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Because again, we always want to focus on DEI to see if they have a mission statement to ensure that we're meeting that, and that also references the monitoring piece. So after the evaluator responds to question 21, if you want to scroll down to that, please, Amir. So by selecting one of these categories, which is aligned to the compendium and RFPQ, the evaluation then branches off to the category chosen. So each division prior to, so they have the subcommittee, then they broke off into subcommittees that were respective to, to the categories that you just saw. And they develop SMART goals that are aligned to the five by 25 as well as the goals within the division. So if we can just, I'll give you an opportunity to go to, let's go to question 28 and we can just walk through a section. I don't know if you can make it a little bigger, Amir. But 28, for example, so when it branches off, if your partner is under social, emotional wellness, the first question will be 28. The CBO's work aligns with data from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. We want to make sure that we always keep the data at the forefront. Our YRBS data, we know that is administered every two years. The last time it was administered was 2021. There is a committee that meets on an ongoing basis, a diverse stakeholder group where we are preparing and getting all of the feedback from the last couple of years to prepare for 2023. And we also want to make sure that they're looking at the school health and debt tier fidelity inventory. The next question, 29, it focuses on the whole school, whole community and whole child approach. We have a wellness policy, so any partner that is coming in, we want them, we want to make sure that they are familiar with our wellness policy. Also, question number 30, the work aligns with the data of attendance and office discipline referrals. We know that when students are socially, emotionally and physically well, they do better in school, obviously academics and their social, emotional wellbeing increases. So we want to make sure that partners have a laser-focused idea of what our goals are and how we're trying to reduce and reduce suspensions, increase attendance and really focus on being a restorative district. The next question, please, 31, Amir goes to 34. 31, the CBO services supports increasing on-track graduation. We always want to focus on increasing our graduation rates, making sure that students graduate on time. Question 32 focuses on the CBO is familiar with the district's code of conduct. We know that the code of conduct was revised for this school year, and we want to make sure really every partner is familiar with our code of conduct. That's our blueprint. That is the tool that we use to engage all of our students and families. And then the next question, final question, 34. The CBO has demonstrated a commitment to creating safe spaces and engaging in culturally and linguistically responsive frameworks. So we always want to make sure that CLRI is at the forefront and that the CBOs are working in partnership with the schools to support students in that, in that area. So that is how that branches off into those questions. And then Amir, if you would please go to question 50, because everyone answers the first 21 questions and then question 50 allows the evaluator, sorry, give you a moment to get there. We know that again, we have 66 schools, we have several central offices, to be able to create one universal evaluative tool. Again, like I said earlier, that's huge. But we know, we can't always cover every single area because all of our schools have unique cultures. So this is an opportunity for the evaluator to include additional comments that weren't addressed. And then question 51 is the final question, and it just simply asks the evaluator, do you, would you recommend this partner for the district to continue to work with this partner? And I just want us all to keep in mind that, again, this will be our first year using this tool. Therefore, we are not trying to immediately terminate contracts. Therefore, we are not trying to immediately terminate contracts and partnerships unless there are glaring concerns that cannot be addressed expeditiously to meet the needs of our students. This is a way for us to collect massive data and to be able to use it and look to see if we are moving in the direction we need to for student success. And Amir, if you could please go back to the PowerPoint. And if you could advance the slide, please. Okay, so our next step is where are we going? And it is in relation to the evaluative tool. And so this is our timeline for the evaluative tool. Prior to launching this district-wide, we want to just test it out. We're not saying a pilot, but just really asking for some volunteers at the district level and the school level, and we'd like to do this in some, this summer to find out and provide them with some guided questions. What was your experience with it? Was it easy to complete? Did it, did it meet the needs of your, of your contract or your MOU with the CBO? And, and just to be able to gather some additional data as we move forward, forward. Then the summer of 2023, we'd like to meet with the principal advisory committee. We definitely want their feedback. We want to be able to share with them the preliminary data points from the school and district personnel. And then in the fall of 2023, we want to roll this out district-wide. We want to have an opportunity to be on one of the principal meetings of hopefully September, no later than October. We also have central office administrators who attend those meetings. And this will be an opportunity to really go through this evaluative tool. Also, we want to make sure that we're training our CBOs. We know that Dr. Reynolds, through her RFPQ process, she has several informational meetings. We would love to be able to collaborate, just to ensure that they are aware of the evaluative tool, but not go too deep into it. But once they are approved, we really want them to have this tool so that they understand, just like with our students, we want to make sure that they understand the rule break. They know what the expectations are so that we can help them to meet those expectations in a partnership. And then we want to continue to work closely with our Office of Shared Accountability. We know that they hold all of our data points and they have been part of this process since its inception. And so we would like them to assist with collecting and disadvertising the data, and that will be on an ongoing basis. And then finally, the fall of 2023, this is just a consideration, to be able to designate points in the procurement process for those CBOs that have demonstrated a track record of success. We know that that may not be next year, but at least the following year, once we get all of the data. Because if you're, if you have a proven track record, that can really increase your chances of becoming a future partner and to be able to advertise that. Next slide, please. And how do we get there? So we know in order to do all of what we described, it takes transparency. We want to maintain fidelity in utilizing the new evaluative tool.
We want equity for all in all that we do with no excuses.
Thank you, and we are now opening it up for questions. Thank you for your time.
Okay, would we like to start with Dr. Evans Brown? Do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions. Great presentation, ladies. I like the fact that we're continuing to involve community partners. And I like the fact that we are providing an evaluative tool. Because often, I think our partners come in our schools and we have not been, and I may be wrong, we have not been consistent in evaluating partners, whether they're community-based or partners that we've had for 20 years. But I think it's important that whoever we bring in, there should be some accountability in terms of student outcomes. So kudos to you guys. Thank you.
Okay, could we have Ms. Woods?
Sure. Very impressive presentation. I agree with Dr. Kathy Evans Brown. You know, you have a compendium of so many agencies who have been working with us for so long. And it's always prudent to have some kind of evaluation to see if the program is efficient, is necessary, that the problem gets out, are we making any progress? I, I really am impressed with the evaluation tool for all, all CBOs. On the thing, presentation about the MBE progress, you know, the goal for 25% minority participation, it looks like we're, we're trying to make progress. And I know, Dr. Reynolds, you're, you're doing so much. You know, you're reaching out, you're doing the training, but you have to, I'd have to say I'm just still, still on baby steps if you're saying. We have 119 agencies that responded and only 31 have contracts. And then the dollar value is $3 million out of a $1.4 billion budget. Oh, we have so, we have so much more that we need to do. I had two MBAE agencies that asked me a question today. One of them said that they found putting their proposal into munis very challenging. So I, she said she got it done. She actually, you know, it took hours and her children helped her. So my question and suggestion is that we extend a little bit more to, to the agencies, the minority in MBWBEs, some help with getting into munis that, that was raised by some of the programs. Another.
May I comment for President Honorable, or President, or Board Member Wood, I'm sorry. And that is exactly why we offer the informational meetings, both virtually as well as in person. And we also extend the contact information. So our lead for those informational meetings is Office of Parent and Family Engagement Supervisor Danny Gray. She's been wonderful, working hand in hand with the partners, walking them through. And our purchase department as well, I know Sue Felice, as well as Jennifer Lotempio have supported those who have been having a little bit of difficulty either uploading or navigating Bonfire. So we can absolutely continue to do that above and beyond the informational sessions.
Well, I always applaud your efforts. I know you're always finding a way to, to reach out. And that's what we, we have to do. Because the commitment was that instead of going constantly with the same people, the same players, that we were gonna extend opportunities to new groups, new people, because there are new technologies, new efficiencies. And, you know, again, as I always say, everybody pays taxes, so everybody wants a shot at having contracts, jobs, and opportunity. But the other thing that was, the agency person called me today and asked about are our ESAR funds. There, if an agency is already has a contract, they were approved, they're doing a good job. They, the agency was under the impression that their contract was for two years, that they were gonna be in for the two years remaining of our ESAR. And there was a rumor going around saying, no, that just because you're in and you're doing a good job, the second year may be, may not have a second year. Is, I, I didn't know what to say to the person. Yet, have you, is that something that's going out to, to the agencies?
Are you referring to any CBO or vendor contracted through that PCPC that we described?
Yes, the RFPQ.
So the RFPQ, okay, so those contracts are yearly contracts. We will be doing the evaluation at the end of the contract term. The good news is that all schools, be it community schools as well as partnership schools, the partnership schools are the non-community based, or excuse me, non-community schools, have funding. So if those schools would like to continue with the contract and the partnership with the CBO, they may do so.
Okay, the vendor indicated that the schools were very happy with them, but they were being told that they may not be, you know, they may not be able to continue because the school itself would have to pick them up because their, our ESAR monies wouldn't, wouldn't be available. So that's.
Perhaps offline you can provide me with the name of the, of the organization.
Okay, I really applaud your outreach as far as having the MBEs network with each other. But can you speak on the idea that we also had suggested and that would be a good thing to do? Since we do have major contractors who continually get funded and provide services. We had said something about, and you, you'd said, we would try to link the minority vendors and women vendors with our major suppliers so that they could partner because, you know, agencies get comfortable with whoever they had as a partner and it, they don't, you know, they need to meet these vendors that we have and see if they can use them and partner with them.
See, I can start and then it looks like Chief Amos wants to chime in as well. So please know that our, many of our CBOs, particularly our CBOs that work with our community schools, they subcontract to many smaller grassroots organizations, MWBE certified organizations. So you heard me mention, you heard two things, you heard Chief Amos mention the MWBE recruitment fair. You heard me mention the PCPC fair. So at that PCPC fair, these, every, we have 63 vendors currently in the PCPC. It's one thing for a school leader to just kind of read the proposals, but we want to use this as an opportunity for them to really sell themselves, market, and allow our district and school leaders to go table to table, to touch their artifacts, to ask questions, to see, you know, perhaps video clips. So this is, you know, you talked about really extending to organizations that have historically not been provided access. Here's your opportunity to really sell themselves to the schools to provide the, the school leaders and district leaders with a lot more information about what they provide. And then Chief Amos, did you want to touch on, on the MWBE recruitment fair that you mentioned?
Yes, and so very, it's very similar to what Dr. Reynolds is talking about, except we're talking about MWBE contractors, although we will invite service vendors as well. But a part of the plan was for me to ask the bigger, more established companies to mentor those who are just starting out so that we can, again, eliminate barriers, do everything that we say in our policy. We really want to stick to all of that stuff that we say that we do. And so part of that is to, through this fair, make sure that we put people together that can help one another.
Well, ladies, you're doing an excellent job, making an excellent start. And I just say kudos and please continue your efforts because, again, if we all have to pay taxes, we all want to share the benefits.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go, I guess, to President Beltman-Cotman.
Thank you. It's so encouraging to see this, this aspect of the district growing. I am concerned, however, that we may be missing a piece of this puzzle by not making sure that our smaller vendors can be paid in a timely manner. It was suggested that by one of our community partners, and I won't say it online, but I will share it individually with you, that if we figure out a way to make sure that they can be paid in a timely manner, they can grow and they can exist and do more. And so this conversation was had previously. We talked about something similar, Board Member Wood shared that the county does as far as providing funds. We have to look at that because we cannot expect a small vendor to wait three and four months to get paid. So I really need you guys to visit that with Jim, our CFO and the superintendent, to get, get us where we can make sure we are small business friendly. I think that's really important and in trying to grow this.
Might I add a comment there for President Cotman? We developed, we developed a template, particularly for those new organizations, the grassroots organizations, that it's working very, very well this year. So we kind of learned last year that some of the new startups didn't have the infrastructure in place. So one of our principal clerks, Collette Clemmons, developed a very simple, easy-to-follow invoice template. And again, going back to our district leads, Danny Gray from the Office of Parent and Family Engagement has worked hand in hand with the, with the organizations just to make sure that their invoicing is accurate. And we have found that once we submit the invoice to BPS contracts, if it's accurate, the turnaround is really, really quick. So I think.
What's really quick? What's really quick?
Well, you know what, I always hesitate and saying, but I will tell you that four weeks, six weeks at the most.
Yeah, but see, that's still a long time. That's still a long time. And so does this mean that we need a policy that says that our, our small business partners will be paid within two weeks once they submit their invoices? They don't have the, in most cases, they don't have the bankroll to support a four-week paying their employees four and six weeks. So I appreciate you creating that. That was definitely needed. But I think, because we have people that are still waiting to get paid for different things, Terry will attest, all year. So I think in order to make sure that this is going to be a success, that there needs to be specific people earmarked to work this, and within two weeks that is slipped and they get their money because they have a payroll to do. They have to do it, and we have to raise the standard in our accounting department to make sure we do it. So I think that's a big piece that has to be addressed. And if it's, if the policy, the board needs to do a policy in order to ensure that it happens in fairness to them. I had an idea that flipped in my mind, and it was about color, color coding services. In other words, if I'm a principal and you have this big, how does, I'm a principal and I have a need, and first of all, I hope that we have a system where someone is monitoring the data in a school and saying, you need to go to work with someone with our social emotional compendium or whatever. But what, what, when I say color coding, I'm a principal, and you give me a book with all these pages in it. What makes you think that I'm going to, you know, look through that book to find who I need? Do you understand what I mean? Help me understand the process with that. How is it, how can we make it, or how efficient is the process? When I open up and I can pull mine out if I have to, how will I know, you know, my, you know what I'm saying? I see you shaking, Dr. Brown. I'm trying to figure out how to make it easier for, to be, to use that compendium. I got a red problem. My problem is my attendance is out of control. Who would be, who would I use for attendance? I don't know, you know, I've never worked, so I'm just trying to figure it out, that's all.
No, and I, and I love your feedback, and that can be included in some of our subcommittee work. Because right now, it's a catalog and it just, it shows what all of the schools have to offer. So it really helps even in the ongoing process of when students and families come in and register, if they want to know, like, well, you know, what's, I'm interested in school X. What kind of services and programs do they offer? Because that may help a family decide, this school better fits my, my child's needs. But I love your idea about color coding and having a multifaceted use for that compendium. So we would.
Yeah, that would work. Thank you. I'm just, it's just an idea that came up because I know when, when you, when we look at your report today, we saw the red, the green, the yellow. And, and I'm just wondering, you know, if your attendance is poor, you need someone who is good in attendance, would you look, you know, what color? I'm just throwing that out. That's, you guys work that. But here, I want Dr. Reynolds to tell us, where are we in the new cycle? Where are we? Are we taking RFPQs? Can I, can I have a, a, a link that I can send to people before? Tell me where you are.
Absolutely. Goodness, I, we are active right now. Let me pull, give me just a second, and you can submit proposals. I should have that scheduled. But let me just say this. Let's go to, Amir, do you have an opportunity to just share the screen really quickly? Go to buffaloschools.org because I want to show everyone in our listening audience. Take us to buffaloschools.org, and then we're gonna go to the Parent and Family Engagement page. Because I want you all to see the calendar.
All right.
You still with us, Amir?
Amir?
Let me see if I can do that. Well. I, I may be able to do it. Give me just a second here.
It's, Glenn is trying to get to it right now. If we want to give him just a minute.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. K.
You're gonna take us to the Parent and Family Engagement page? Perfect. Go to depart, departments. Go to Parent and Family Engagement. Scroll down a little bit, it's at the bottom. Parent and Family Engagement, click. Scroll down, please. So you see on the left-hand side, PCP, PCPC. Let's click there. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and let's scroll down. So that's the catalog and the... The fly, oh, there it is, the informational flyer. So click on RFPQ, no, I'm sorry, down, RFPQ Information Page. On the bottom, not the chip sheet, on the bottom of this page, it says, Current RFPQ Informational Meeting Flyer, click there.
Okay.
Scroll down, please. There we go. So here, then here's, here's where we are in the cycle. So what's today? The June 14th. So we're in the active cycle right now. So it closes on June, excuse me, July 4th. So right now, CBOs have an opportunity to submit their proposal by way of Bonfire. Our next virtual informational meeting will be conducted. If you take a look on the right-hand side, where it says RFPQ informational meetings. We have a virtual meeting being conducted on July 12th. And we also have an in-person RFPQ informational meeting at the Lafayette Parent Center that evening. So this cycle is open until July 4th. I mentioned that it then closes for a two-week period so that the committee can rate the proposals, inform the, the participants, provide feedback, and update that PCPC. So it closes down for two weeks, and then it reopens again on July 19th and remains open until September 3rd. So notice that this schedule is provided through the end of next school year.
Great.
So help us to spread the word. We got all of the informational meetings outlined as well, so that folks are well informed.
So can you bring this up and have this, when you first come on our page, one of our highlight things to let people know that this is going on now? And is it possible, just to have that under, is it also under calendar events as well? Maybe we can throw it over there under calendars, under our calendar. The reason that I'm asking, people are asking me about this. And I, I would like a link just to send them. I can't talk to them about it, I know that. But I can, can I send them a link during this period of time? If they're asking me a question, just send them a link and let them, and do it. But this is really aggressive, and I want to thank you very much. I appreciate it. I think some good things can come out of this. Thank you so much. I appreciate the work you all are doing. Thank you.
Ms. McCosey?
Yeah, so a lot of what I was, I don't even know if the word is concerned, but the, you know, the pay structure for our smaller businesses, myself being a smaller business and now going out three months waiting on a payment. It, it really is, that really is an issue. But I just want to say that this is something, when it comes to CBOs and it comes to how we vet folks, this has been near and dear to me, and I've made, you know, I've, I've made comments over the past. And I can tell you that this is great. You know, to be able to bring folks to the table, to make it, to apply, to have the transparent process, to have, you know, very spelled out and detailed ways that folks in our community can actually engage with our students and our families. This is, this is really great, you know, trajectory. It's been six years that I've been on the board, and look where we are now. So I just give kudos to the fact that, you know, people are, you guys are listening, you understand how important this is. This isn't just a chore. I can see you're putting your heart and everything into this for the benefit of everybody involved. So I really just want to give you props because this is a process. We have had people grandfathered in who've just been kind of laying low, doing the least. And sometimes we aren't on the right side of how, you know, our CBOs were functioning in our district. And this is a way to make sure both of us and our CBOs are held, you know, accountable for what they're bringing to our communities, our students and our families. So I am just, I'm just over the moon with the progress this is, and I just appreciate you all.
Thank you. We appreciate you. It's one thing for us as, you know, cabinet members to have the vision and, and conjunction with Superintendent Williams. It's another thing to have dynamic department team members who are able to carry out that work. So we really do applaud our department staff. We really do. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'd like to thank Ms. Amos, Dr. Reynolds, and Dr. Brown for a great presentation. And in light of the time over, I'm gonna just turn it right over to Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Chairwoman Shuda, and certainly thank you to all three of our chiefs. I hope what you have seen through their presentation is that we do have a lot of work to do, but we've also done a lot in a very short period of time to make sure that we're moving this lever forward. So I just want to thank them. I think it's a good suggestion for us to have it, you know, in a place on the website. And I think, you know, that should be an easy lift for us to be able to do that so that, you know, it's easily accessible to folks who may be interested in supporting our students. And we know that we've got lots of them, and we've got lots of needs. But certainly, you know, this is a heavy lift, the work that they're doing. This was a heavy, heavy lift. I don't believe the district, and I thought I heard Dr. Brown say, she couldn't really find any other district that, you know, is doing this kind of work. So this is, this is cutting-edge work. It's a lot of work, but, you know, they have put a lot into it. Ms. Amos just joined us just a short time ago, but she has hit the ground running. And I believe we're just gonna continue to get better and better and move to the next level. So thank you, ladies, and thank the board members.
Can I say one thing before we hang up? Paul Wood, would you please make sure in the future that you don't bring your dog to our board meetings? Thank you.
Okay, are we, we're done? Good night.
Good night. Remember, June 14th, we're walking this year. If you're able to join us, join us. We had a wonderful Flag Day today ceremony at Forest Lawn and School 54. It was great. It was a great, great day, so.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you, folks. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.